Good evening, everyone. The board work session for May is now called to order. May we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Shiber?
Most holy and glorious Lord God, you have promised we two or three to get or gather that be in midst them and blessed. Lord, we humbly beseech you that we make good decisions. And, Lord, we ask that everything that we do is good for you and your glory and everything that we do for the children. In Jesus' name I pray, Lord, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Shiber. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Second.
We're properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carry. Need approval for consent agenda, please?
Second.
We're properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carry. We have one nay. And we have five. You have that, Ms. Scott? We have five affirmative and one, Mr. Shiber, opposed. Motion carry. Information action items. We will start with Ms. Lilly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we have several policies that are up for first read. And they are in your packet that have been sent to you. Do y'all have any questions about those at this time?
Anybody have a question?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barber? Summer feeding plan?
Board, good to see everyone. So, tonight, we're going to discuss what our plan is for the summer feeding of 2025. Very similar to last year. So, we're going to operate two open feeding sites. One on the western part of the county and South Creek Elementary School. That is open for walk-in feedings. One on our side, on this side of the county, excuse me, with E.J. Hayes Elementary School, also open for those walk-ins. The dates of operation. So, we will begin serving as soon as our Martin County Schools retesting sessions begin. So, we'll pick right up from with feeding on June 9th. We'll carry out feeding in June through June 27th. That will be operating Monday through Friday. Will be closed the week of 4th of July. We'll pick back up with July 7th through July 31st, Monday through Thursday. The differentiation in those two months is simply because we will be open and operating any day that we have a Martin County School learning program, enrichment program, in session. In July, our learning programs are not operating on Thursday. So, while we will, while we will be able to maximize our feeding numbers while decreasing the cost of the school nutrition program. We are up operating days. Last year, we fed, excuse me, 20, 21, 23, excuse me, 23 operating days. This year, we'll be feeding 31. So, we are up eight days this summer. The walk-in feeding times are from, for breakfast, 8:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. Lunch, 11:00 to 12:30 p.m. And I know in the past, when we discussed this, there is concern about the walk-in sites. Let's be honest, South Creek Elementary School, very, very rural area, hard to get those, those kids there. E.J. Hayes, a little bit better, there is that community there. But still, we receive very little walk-ins. I will say, luckily, the majority of the walk-ins that we would have are supported with our community programs that we also support during summer feeding. We have W.C. Chance, we have Kids Excel. On the western part of the county will be at South Creek Middle. Kids Excel at Riverside Middle, as well as O'Boys and Girls Club. They're only operating at South Creek Elementary School this year. That's a program decision on their behalf. I did have an individual reach out for another approval of a site in Oak City. So, I'll be meeting with him to get his site approved. I have to visit his site per DPI regulations. And I'll provide more information if that does come about. And that's T.B.F.U., I believe, with Mr. Marvin Hillier to reach out. Do we have any questions?
Any questions? I have one question. Do we know how large that program is for the future? Is the T.B.F.U.?
He said approximately 20 students.
Okay, great.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Now, we have our budget amendments. Ms. Emily?
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
Tonight, we just have a few budget amendments that will need to be approved once we've finished. We have amendment number 10, which is a state budget amendment. This is just an increase of $275,966. And this is a result of DPI adjustments, luckily, to our favor. We have federal increase as well, $15,035.11. That is also an allotment revision from DPI. We also have a capital outlay amendment. And this is just for reallocation of purpose code funding for an HVAC unit at Martin County High School. So, that's no difference in money. We just reallocated it into a different purpose code for that. And then, our Fund 8, we have an amendment there. This is increased by $51,733.93. This is a result of our fund balance appropriated. This is for a driver's ed car. This is money that we've been saving. So, I know it says fund balance, but we've been putting away driver's ed fees to be able to purchase a new car, and we're there. And then, we also received a new CTE agriculture grant. And then, we had to budget for a little bit of additional homeless consortium funds.
Awesome.
So, this would just need to be approved.
Any questions before I ask for? Okay, then we need a motion to approve the May budget amendments?
Second.
Second?
Second.
We're properly moved and seconded to approve the May budget amendments. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carry.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cynthia, Ms. Amy?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, we're just going to update you guys on a few of our bus updates. We do have the Here Comes the Bus app. Parents can track the bus with their students on the bus when it's coming. It's based off of GPS data. There's a map that shows them the location of the bus. They also receive alerts when the bus is approaching, it has arrived, or if there's any delays or route changes. So, the parents are aware of what's going on with the buses. It is available as a mobile app and also on the website. We have GPS to support the sub-drivers. We have these tablets on all the buses. The routes are loaded onto the buses. It gives them turn-by-turn directions. We are still working on this and updating the maps. Some of the maps are outdated. So, we are working on getting this, not us specifically, but this, the state. This software comes from the state level. But they are working on getting that updated. But that also is available to the sub-drivers. And we also now have bus radios. And I think we have some to demonstrate. They connect directly to the vehicle power. So, when the bus comes on, the radio comes on. So, it's always charged and ready to roll. It works on cell service. And we were all a little skeptical, but Cynthia, Shanika, they took the buses out to the very remote places in the county, and it works perfect. There's ES Chat. The ES Chat is the software that the radios use, but you can also put it on your computer or tablet, which is what the assistant principals are going to use at school level, so that they can track the buses from the school level. The bus, it's also on channels. So, the bus can radio back to the bus garage, or they can radio back to the school. If you have the app, you can talk to any bus number you want to. And this greatly improves our safety, so drivers can instantly relay emergencies back, or if a parent's not home for an elementary student. So, they don't have to pull over to stop and talk on their cell phone. They can just radio with the radio.
And we do, I have the administrator on my phone, so I get every phone. We will limit each school to their, just their buses. So, we won't have so much chatter all over the place. And they will be limited to just those channels. We won't be hearing, no, EMS won't be hearing our stuff, and we won't be hearing their stuff. And they can't talk to each other about, you know, the movies or whatever. It's strictly for bus radio. But we do have one out there, just so we could demonstrate. Shanika has one of the radios, and then you'll just see how it just connects with us. Say it again? I wanted you to hear it, but I can hear it. And then, I just said we just push you to talk. Thank you, Shanika. And then, the bus will hear me. So, it's just as simple as that. They'll just pick it up, push a button, call us, or call their school. And then, we automatically have it. And this is always with me. And Shanika, well, we have one at the bu, we'll have one at the bus garage, and each school will have their own tablet. Okay? Any questions?
This is a game changer with safety. So, I asked them to give this update tonight because these are several things that we've upgraded over the last two years that are just simply a game changer. Parents can track the bus on their phone. We have parents that have to work in the morning. They leave their children home to get on the bus. And they can see that all the way to and from their house. They, there is no more, they know when the bus is coming, so you don't have to wait in the cold 30 minutes before the bus gets there. You can already, you know, you can track it on your phone and go out when it's time. So, it's just a game changer. With these radios, this is huge for safety. So, let's say a bus with a kindergartner pulls up to a home and the parent's not home. Okay? Previously, we'd have to pull over, call back to the school with a cell phone in order to reach the, the school, to call the parent, to find out where the parent is, or simply continue the route until the end of the route, and then take the child back to school. Now, it is just instantaneous without all the back and forth, which is just a game changer for if there was a health emergency on the bus. Again, it's instantaneous to get the help that you need. So, I'm really excited about these changes. Appreciate technology and transportation working together to make this happen for our students. Again, the GPS is something that our drivers requested. So, our teacher assistants do a fantastic job covering our buses. But if you can imagine getting on a bus with 40, 50 children and having to follow a paper route, that's difficult. But now, with GPS, this is going to be a new initiative that will provide turn-by-turn directions. All the, it's not all worked out yet. This is something they're finalizing, but they're in the final stages of it, of getting those turn-by-turn directions, so that when they do step on a bus, they're not having to read a paper map. The map talks to them, tells them where to turn, and tells them where to stop. So, this is just exciting. I just wanted to recognize these guys. A lot of work has gone into testing these radios, making sure we pick the right radios, getting the radios installed, getting the tablets, getting the GPS, working on the tablets. A lot of work has gone into, where, again, we're in the final stages of that. So, thank you to you guys. This is a huge safety piece for our families and something that I'm excited about. So, I appreciate you guys sharing tonight. Thank you.
One more upgrade. We're looking at upgrading the cameras that are on the buses. We can either upgrade the, the cameras to download the footage via Wi-Fi. So, when the bus comes back to the school and they connect to the Wi-Fi at the school level, then the video footage from that bus will automatically download, and we can watch it from there. We can also do that by cellular. And so, instantaneously, we can get to the footage. We're looking at the different costs and the different things we would need to make that happen right now.
Because currently, we have to go to the bus, pull the hard drive out, take it into the school, put it in a reader, and look at it that way.
Which only some computers have the reader, and we share buses. So, if the bus is a partner at a different school, the assistant principal has to get in the car, drive to the school, pull the tape, take it back, watch it, and then return it. So, that is a huge time issue. This is live.
Yeah. So, with the upgrades, you could do it from wherever, from a computer, wherever you are.
Which would be amazing. So, this is not something we have done yet. This is a next step for us. We're trying hard to figure out how we can get the funding and use the funding that we do have, use the resources that we do have to make this happen. Because this, this is something that our assistant principals have requested, a major need. And again, just that, that live viewing of what's going on the bus. Two different things that we're looking at. One would not be live, but as soon as they bless you, pull in the bus parking lot, it would upload, and you would have your footage at your fingertips. The other is actually live. So, you can see what's going on on the bus every second as it, as it happens. An assistant principal can be at their school and actually watching the bus. Now, remember, we have the radios. So, we can mitigate issues before they ever actually become issues, which could be a powerful thing. So, we're looking at both of those options.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wynn, CTE progress update?
Good evening, everybody. So, in your packet is just basically the, our CLNA progress for this year. The CLNA is also located in your packet. On the screen, that's our Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment. And so, it's a biennial process in which every two years is, is updated. So, I dropped some key terms up there. We have to do this process inside of DPI's program called CSIP, for short, also meaning Continuous Comprehensive Improvement Plan. And then, within that, we enter in the local application. So, our CLNA and our local, local application basically is our guide for the next two years of how we'll operate and the programs that we'll offer to our students. So, in the progress update, it includes the subheadings that are in your packet to show how we must align our programs to the state standards and the required characteristics to develop and facilitate a high-quality CTE program. And each of those areas in the progress updates will show what we have done this year to achieve and surpass our program goals and objectives. So, just some things where we have met or exceeded expectations. Our family and stakeholder participation. This year, for our career and college fair, we also asked parents of juniors and seniors to attend as well, to reach out to those stakeholders. We've had an uptick in our non-traditional concentrators, which, for example, that would be a female taking a welding class, non-traditional concentrators. We continue to place students in internships that continue to help them with part-time or full-time employment. Staff development has been a, a large area. We, we have improved from the past several years in getting our teachers involved in better staff development. Our partnership with Martin Community College has grown and expanded. Also, one thing Dr. White mentioned at the first part of the year was that we had to have clubs and more participation from students. So, therefore, we, we moved toward an enhanced CTSO, which is a career and technical student organization. And we did that with Skills USA. And so, as y'all have heard before, we've had students now go and compete at the regional competition in Greenville, where some of them actually won first place. And then, we had a lot of students go participate at the state level in Greensboro. So, it gave them those experiences. We've also expanded our marketing and branding through local radio, TV, anything that we're doing. We try to put it out on social media, just to bring awareness to everyone in the community about our CTE program. And then, finally, students who earn credentials, certifications, and are workies proficiency, which improved drastically. So, that's our update through our two-year plan. It would be a bigger presentation next year when we get ready to rewrite it. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do want to say that both within the county and outside of the county is a lot of excitement from the grads, say to me, people my age, like, wow. So, thank you so much. Just doing a wonderful job.
Thank you. And I want to shout out to our CTE team, our team of teachers as well, who've really helped put things into place to move our progress forward.
I was telling you before the meeting how much we appreciate the, this new machine they have with the...
The Anatomage table.
Yes.
Yes.
Say that again, Mr. Wynn. Okay, thank you. Very good.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, now, we have Ms. Andrea Lilly. Class size exception.
Hello again. So, a class size exception in grade K-33 is triggered when the actual class size exceeds the state's class size requirements at the end of the second school month and for the remainder of the school year. The individual class size in K-3 shall not exceed the allotment ratio by more than three students. The district average and individual maximum class sizes are listed on this chart. The latest change was in 21, 22, with kindergarten, the district average at 18 and the individual maximum at 21. First grade district average at 16 and the individual max in 19. And grades two and three, district average at 17 and the individual max, maximum at 20. Exception reports are calculated at DPI to determine any overages. The report is normally available in October. However, this year, we switched over to Infinite Campus, so it was not available to us until April. And we also found that to be below all required district averages. However, South Creek Elementary School was found to be over in the individual class maximum size in grades one and in grade three. Fortunately, South Creek Elementary School qualified for a waiver due to being geographically isolated. All reports have been analyzed, and the waiver was submitted on May 12th. And Dr. White signed off on this analysis, declaring its accuracy. Do you have any questions about class size in our waiver that we submitted? Nope? Okay, thank you.
Any motion?
Head and Chair, the Martin County Board of Education will go into closed session subject to the advice from the attorney pursuant to the N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS115C-319 and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The Board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the Board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in the N.C. General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20U.S.C., 1232G, and N.C. General Statute The Board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in the N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Have a motion? Can we get a second?
Second.
We're properly moved and seconded to go into closed session. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carry. All opposed nay. Motion carried.
Motion second by Shiver. All in favor of approving the personnel, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried, personnel approved. We do have a couple of announcements. Our next board meeting will be June the 2nd. And we have our first Martin County graduation on June the 6th. Our work session will be on June 26th and this is the end of the year work session. Any other comments from anyone? Board members, yes, Ms. Abby?
I would like to thank Dr. White for your assistance with the Goose Nest Festival in getting us students. We had students from Martin County High School. And then Coach Floyd brought an entire busload of middle schoolers, football players. And they walked around with their jerseys on and they helped us. And they, all of them said they were looking forward to coming back next year. And it was a good look. I mean those kids actually were, it's a football player called Big Mike. He needs special accommodations, he needs something extra. They were fantastic. I mean everyone talked about how well mannered all the kids were, the high students and the football kids. So, thanks again.
Awesome, awesome. And thank you, Ms. Abby. And to the community, if you need help, please reach out to Martin County Schools because we want our students to be of service and that's part of our strategic plan. So we want to support you. Please reach out if you need our students to volunteer. We would love to be a part of your community efforts.
Anyone else? Okay, before I ask for a motion, I do want to give a shout out to LifeWise. I did have a grandparent just speak with me last week when she had her granddaughter and she was singing some, I'm not gonna say hymn, but she was singing and the grandmother said, "Where'd you get that from?" And she said, you know, she attends LifeWise. My understanding is it's at all the elementary schools. So this is, this is voluntary, but this is great for our Martin County Schools.
Yes, it's phenomenal.
With that said, can I have a motion to adjourn at 8:03?
So moved.
Baker, second by Mason. Been properly moving to second.